All right, we'll now call the city council special meeting to order for December the 3rd. Uh, now do the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Invocation been given by Councilwoman Brittany McGuire.
Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this night. Lord, thank you for keeping us all safe and healthy. Lord, thanks for the opportunity for each of us to come out tonight as we make these decisions. Lord, I'm asking for wisdom, preaching every one of us. Lord, help us to come up with the best solution for the situation. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are you seated? Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Here.
Councilmember Mercier.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Thank you. So as you know, there's been some recent events, uh, at the airport. And we are here to discuss where we are now and then what we should be doing in the future. I think, uh, Lowell, do you have something, uh, prepared to go over what has happened up to this point?
Very briefly, uh, Nick and I can, can outline it as well as, uh, council. Essentially, in the items that you approved at your last meeting, one of the key items was to have the bond available Friday before it was to expire on the 22nd.
Is your microphone on?
Can you hear that better?
That's better, thank you.
Okay, and that bond was not received by the deadline that was in the letter that was sent from your council. So at that point, essentially, it went into abeyance, uh, for the council to consider, uh, future action in accordance with that letter.
Okay.
Pursuant to your direction on, on the, uh, meeting before that, you said that if they didn't, the bond was not received, that the city should take over the airport. And so, uh, we did begin to do that immediately after that occurred.
Okay. So as of right now, the city of Avon Park has, uh, taken back control of the airport as far as the day-to-day operations out there. Uh, I want to understand there's, uh, the, the FAM Cabo lease is still technically in effect at this point. Um, so now we're here to discuss what we'd like to do going forward. So do you, uh, is there any presentations?
It's, uh, this is, um, just, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, sir.
This is a discussion in between everyone. It's a decision on which way do we move forward? Is it something where, uh, we would like to, if you want to continue with the lease? Or, um, the agreement that's in place? Or do you want to go another route? And I think that's, you know, it's something you guys can discuss either amongst yourselves or I can lead it, whichever you prefer.
Okay, and so at this point, uh, the bond was not given to the city, but there, there is now a bond in effect. Is that true?
That is correct. The bond was received Tuesday, uh, after the prior one expired on the 22nd. It was received the next Tuesday. That 22nd was a Saturday.
Okay. So it'd be up to the council if, uh, we want to, uh, try and continue, uh, down the path that we had set before. Uh, as you know, there was not, um, any other options, uh, at the time other than to, um, immediately take it over with staff that we did not have, uh, or continue with FAM, uh, for a certain period of time. And, uh, now here we are. So, uh, does the council have any comments as to the direction they would like to, uh, take? Whether continuing, uh, with FAM or trying to find a different route?
Before we go there, uh, uh, just like to suggest that Casey is here and he'd like, he's got, had his hand raised.
I didn't see the hand, sorry.
Yeah, no problem. So if you want to recognize him.
Mayor, before he come up, I have a question for the two attorneys. Um, there was a deadline set for the 22nd, but no one is saying why that deadline wasn't met. Did they give a reason? I didn't matter, but did they give a reason why the deadline wasn't met on the 22nd?
I'm sure we'll probably get one.
He's, he's getting ready to speak right now, but, but this, this basically what he's saying is that there, he had somebody in place, um, putting that together and that he wasn't able to get it done before, uh, Monday. And, um, apparently, I don't know if he didn't work on the weekend or what, but that, that was what occurred. So, uh, apparently the, uh, that, the bond is predated to, um, try and make it the 22nd, so.
If you would just give your name and organization for the record, please. Organization or, or address, either one.
The mic and the button on the mic.
Blue light on.
Thank you, sir.
There we go.
Now it's on. You can hear me clear?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. So I hold in my hands the bond, physical, physical papers. So in the email I sent to Jerry Burr on Friday was that I needed the time to be able to get this received. We were still working with the, the surety. He provided it on Tuesday. The second I got the email, sent it to Jerry Burr. It is dated for the 22nd, so you guys prematurely cut me off on Saturday. I would have tried to have it there on Monday, but at that point, you guys had already sent out your letter, your email stating that it was over with. So I didn't try to press anything further at that point. It was all on the surety. I did have a conversation with the surety on Tuesday, or excuse me, on Monday, letting him know everything that you guys had already sent per the bond, uh, in that email. And let, I went point by point with him and explained each piece and how FAM was involved, who was involved, and how we were going to try to move forward in making sure that this was still a good lease. He accepted everything with it and we moved forward, got it on Tuesday. So that's why you didn't have anything. Here's the actual physical paperwork that has a stamp and everything with it. So you have the email version and this is the, uh, real documents. So that's what goes towards why I didn't have it Friday. I'd been working on it the whole time. When you sent that email on Friday saying it was over with, not giving me any more time, I figured that we're cooked at that point. So that's the answer.
Understood. Are there any questions relating to the, to the bond?
Do you mind if I go through each point of that letter? Because I have a lot of documentation to provide, provide for you guys before you guys make a decision.
Sure, yeah. We don't have the letter in front of us, but by all means.
No, I, I have it and I'll make sure to provide it with you with everything else that I've got here. So, A on your guys' letter.
This, this should be in your agenda.
We have a copy of the lease.
This is from your letter dated 20 November.
It's part of the, um, packet that Melissa put online.
Go ahead.
Alrighty, so, letter A of this letter, specific, I'm not going to read the whole thing because it's going to take too much time, but it specifically identifies the 20% of ownership. In the lease agreement, and you guys put it very clearly in this letter, FAM Cabo is required to provide the city and the FAA advance notice of any proposed, anticipated, or imminent change of more than, that being the key word, more than 20%. The 200 shares that I received did not require notification. It was exactly 20%. So the, the requirement for me was not met or not needed per the lease. But I will tell you, I provided notice anyways. I have, I have here an email to Danielle Kelly dated September 29th, and it states, please see attached, we understand that the FAA has to be, be involved, but ownership will be the same once I transfer my 200 voting shares to Nicole Roberts, which was already a 300 voting share member. So the only thing that changed was me getting 200 and it still didn't meet the requirements. The requirement that was not met per the lease agreement was the 250 shares for Charlie Brown and the 250 shares for Jonathan Clark. I don't know per the lease agreement who that requirement was supposed to be met by, but I was not a member of FAM at that time. So that meant either JT Clark, the CEO at the time of Rossi, needed to provide that, or the CEO of FAM needed to provide that information to you or the, or the FAA. So I'm just letting you know, I did provide it even though I didn't need to. I also have the read receipt by Dr. Kelly. And all this will be provided to you regardless of how you guys, uh, choose, because this was supposed to come to you anyways as far as documentation. Letter B, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but discusses the security deposit escrow. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Lowell, but you guys were provided any and all information you needed on November 13th that showed where the security deposits came out, who authorized the ACHs, where that money went to, and how it was spent. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So you guys were already provided that information. So I don't know why it's on this letter of why we didn't provide or who, who is involved. You have the information. You can take it and do what you need to with it.
The issue is two things. One is there is a shortage in the escrow deposit.
That is true.
Okay, and we're not really talking about FAM 2.0 or FAM 1.0.
I understand. It's just in general, it is missing. I understand. I understand. I just wanted to point that out, though. We, I have been providing anything and everything you guys need to decide what's going on with it as you just discussed 2.0 or 1.0. C discusses the quantity of aviation fuel delivered to the airport. Now you guys in this letter state that I acknowledge that some quantity of aviation fuel delivered to the airport could not be accounted for. That is incorrect. I didn't say that it was missing. I said, we think it's missing and we don't know for sure because we don't have, FAM 1.0 doesn't have the right records to show what fuel was used. Jet A, avgas, gallons, any of that information. So I went to, to AEG, which is our fuel provider, and I have every invoice since, uh, 20, 2024 all through 2025. And I will be providing them to you guys tonight so that you can look it over and see what the gallons are, what we paid, when it was delivered, any and all information you want with that. We are still trying to do our best to try to figure that out internally. I'm having to, I'm having to take the gallons, the months that the, uh, fuel was sold, and how we are trying to compare it to make sure that there was no money lost. So just letting you know, I did not say that it was missing. I said that we think it's missing. And we provided it to the sheriff, the information of where our accountant at the time, which was Chad Bessonano, where he thought that fuel was missing from. So that documentation's already been provided to the sheriff to do some, some type of investigation. D specifically this sta- uh, states that we presently do not maintain complete financial records in accordance with GAAP. That is true. I admitted that from the get-go because I didn't trust QuickBooks and the information that was in it. I since then have not only the agreement that I signed with the accountant to make sure the books were clean in QuickBooks, but I have in my hand and willing to provide the January through December of 2020, uh, 2024's balance sheet and P&Ls along with the monthly and year of FAM KAVO's 2025's P&Ls and balance sheets. So you guys can take a look at it all you like and see where every, where every dime was spent. Which means the reconciliation. So that takes care of D. E specifically discusses the gates and the cameras. Here are the receipts for both cameras that I purchased within two or three days of us having the meeting. I wanted to make sure that we had cameras out there that were going to work all the time, that could have connectivity and that we wouldn't have any issues with. Two of them were going to be connected to 5G, so we were going to be, be paying a monthly service fee to make sure that even if the wireless went out, they would connect through 5G and still record day and night, including 360-degree views. These are three different cameras, two for one, one receipt and one for the other receipt. I've returned one because of the email, thinking that we weren't going to be able to do anything with. The other one I still have, but I at least wanted to show you the proof that I went out and made it happen as per the discussion at the last meeting.
I have a question, if you don't mind.
Yes, ma'am.
You did all this after the Monday night meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Why did you wait so long? The cameras have been broke. You even told us yourself that they had been down for some time because you couldn't get the password. And so now we discussed this last Monday night, and now all of a sudden you have cameras. Because you never told us that at the last meeting.
I got them, I, I got them after the meeting is discussed.
Right, why, why so long? Why did you wait so long? Why couldn't you?
I didn't know whether the cameras worked or not. I only had a login for them.
You said you didn't have a login.
No, I said the login didn't work, is what I said.
Right.
So I don't know if that was connectivity issue through my computer. That was me trying to log in through the, the internet-based, uh, access web. That doesn't mean that the cameras don't work. That just means I wasn't able to access them. So whether or not that mattered, I still did what was requested at that meeting immediately.
Okay, go ahead.
So the next thing. A proposed annual budget. I'm going to go back to what I said last time. I cannot provide an annual budget if I don't know what, uh, and this ties into the CIP, by the way. If I don't know what projects we're going to do. We still, just like before, are still not recognized by FDOT as the sponsor of this airport. Only the FAA has recognized this. So that means we are going to have to work together to find out what that budget's going to be. We'll have to sit down together to figure out what that budget will be. G specifically has to deal with the operating bond. We've already discussed that. H, FAM Cabo has provided incomplete inconsistent monthly reports with operational data. Again, I have all P&Ls and balance sheets, which will tell you anything and everything you need to see. I, FAM Cabo has not provided the required annual report, which is due to the, the city by October 1st. Looking at 6.3B per the AIPP, a lot of the information that you're looking for from the annual report is in the P&Ls and balance sheets. It'll tell you fuel spent, it'll tell you where we spent every dime, what categories. It'll give you all the information you need. And again, there's a yearly and a monthly, so you guys can go month by month or the entire year. Now I want to move on to the terms for continuation of FAM Cabo lease. Number one, have a bond. We had it, and it's dated back to the 22nd. I was working on it.
I have a question about your bond too, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
I, I see that your power of attorney was dated on the 25th. I'm sorry, the notary. The notary signed it on the 25th of November.
Right, I think of 2024.
No, of 2025.
Okay.
So how is a notary gonna sign a document three days later or two days later than what's on the effective date of this bond? And did you also turn in your bond to the city exactly like what's emailed here? That was emailed?
I don't know what you mean by exactly.
This copy right here, is this how you sent it to the city?
I sent it as attachment exactly how I got it.
Exactly like this.
Exactly how I got it.
Okay, because Florida Airport Management never executed this bond by signature. Your signature.
Yeah, all I did was take it and forward it on because that was, that was what they provided. And it stamped the same here. It stamped the same here for 25th of November.
Right, so when you turned it in, you didn't sign it, so basically.
I couldn't sign it with it was, when it was an email. That's why I needed the paper copy.
Right, so you, you still, it still isn't execu- it, it, it isn't executed by you as the principal.
Okay, but I couldn't because it was an email.
I understand.
I needed the, the paper document. Okay.
Is, is the paper copy signed that you have with you?
I will sign it. I haven't signed it yet. It was still to, this, listen, I got an email stating that we were, you guys were going to be taking it over. So why would I sign something if we're, if you weren't going to accept it? I at least wanted you to see it, whether you guys were going to accept the bond or not.
So another thing.
Is the bond in place or is it, are they waiting to find out whether we accept your deal?
The bond is in place currently. That's why they sent me the paper copy.
So without your signature?
I can sign this. I'm, I'm sorry, say again.
Without your signature, they're, they're, they're reliant, they're, they're willing to accept the bond without your signature?
I'm going to have the signature.
But you haven't had it until now, until you got it on Tuesday.
Right, so I didn't know whether you were going to accept, whether or not the bond is good right now, this second. You guys have already sent the email and take over, took over the demise premises. As a matter, as a matter of fact, you went further than that. And I'm going to discuss that in a second, how you guys went against the lease agreement and the specificity of it. So no later than January 31st. So these are all items that we didn't have to have completed until January 31st. A, a detailed explanation for the discrepancy in the tenant's security deposit account. Again, you guys already have all the information you need to decide where that money went, who put it there, and what accounts it went to. It doesn't require me giving you anything else, any other information. B, a complete reconciliation of fuel purchased, sold, remaining, and explanation for any missing aviation fuel. Again, I have all the invoices here. They will be provided to you. And then it'll be, be able to be balanced against the PL and the balance sheet as you guys look through it and as we continue to do our internal audit. Unaudited financial statements, again, those we have, you're being provided with tonight. The annual budget, we already discussed. A detailed explanation of how FAM Cabo intends to improve financial oversight. I actually have a couple of documents here that I was going to provide to you guys that'll show you how we are now comparing invoices to what our tenant leases are and making sure that the taxes, the security deposits, fuel, you name it, is being compared to those invoices so that we don't miss anything. There'll be no, no gaps and we won't just trust and rely on QuickBooks only. We have backstops at this point. F, the audited annual financial report in accord, in accordance with Article 6.1E. We are still working on that and have per year, per this, January 31st to get it completed. Three, an ongoing basis, FAM Cabo must provide monthly financial reports and supporting records. No problem. No later than January 31st, 2026, FAM Cabo must either I repair or replace the airport gates or to demonstrate to the city satisfaction that it has the financial capacity. We were already in discussions and getting two quotes to be able to figure out which one was going to be fixing those gates. And we had already spoken to the city about getting the CRA funds as discussed at the first meeting. So we were already in the process of that. No later than January 31st, 2026, FAM Cabo must either I repair or replace the airport security cameras. I just showed you the receipts and I will provide them to you. Beginning immediately, FAM Cabo must provide the city with biweekly written updates on the progress of each of the above tasks. No problem. We were ready to meet that, that demand. Beginning immediately, FAM Cabo must provide the city with monthly budget and budget to actual report biweekly. I have a budget that I've been working off of for November and December that shows exactly what bills I needed to make sure got paid. Gladly providing this to you as well tonight. You guys can look it over. Number eight, FAM Cabo shall provide the monthly rent to the city by the end of the last business day of the month. I had actually called after that meeting to see if I could make that payment early because I wanted you guys to see that the money was going to be there even before the December 1st hit. It showed up on November 21st out of our account into the city's account. FAM Cabo must remain in compliance with all the aspects of the lease. Obviously, that's a given. So I've addressed everything in this letter. I don't know if it's going to be to your satisfaction, but I'm at least going to provide you all, with all this information so that you can make a decision or at least have the documentation from FAM as required. What I would like to move on, though, is specifically your email in it from November 21st from Mr. Burr to myself and Michael Powell states, "The city is exercising its rights under Article 21 dot 2A and C to terminate FAM Cabo's right to possession of the airport." I have here Article 2 dot 1, excuse me, 2A and C. C specifically states, "Terminate Lessie's right to possession under the agreement and reenter and retake possession of the demise premises. Lesser shall not be deemed to have thereby accepted a surrender of the demise premises, and Lessie shall remain liable for all rent." We can't be liable for all rent if the city's sending out emails stating that they are to receive all rents, which then, of course, sent the tenants of the cit- of the airport into a tizzy trying to figure out who they were going to give those lease payments to. And quite a few of them decided it wasn't going to be us in the month of November. So because of those actions, this specifically per the lease states that we're supposed to be liable for those, those rent payments. We can't be if you guys took it over. That, of course, sets us back with everything else because we don't, we now have to just figure out who is behind on those rents or who gave it to the city, who's going to give it to us. Also, the QT pod, there's nothing in there stating about fueling. Technically, the fuel in those tanks is ours. I have an email from Danielle Phillips going to QT pods telling them that they are officially to give all their, uh, information to the city and not to FAM. Demise premises meant you guys go out there and make sure operations were going correctly. And I understand the purpose of it and you had every right to per the lease. I get it. But when it came to the money, it was supposed to still go to FAM because FAM has not been kicked off the lease yet. I wanted to ask a question. Last meeting, I gave you guys a bunch of information, including a share, the information for the sheriff's report. Because in your guys' letter, you discuss who the, uh, who we need to, or what we need to do by January 31st, telling you what people or who was involved in the issues at the airport. Did anybody here go and look up that sheriff's report? Anybody?
Well, if it's an active investigation, is it closed?
It's closed. That's why I gave you that information.
You're talking about the original, correct?
I'm talking about the sheriff's case that was closed that you guys are asking about all the time, who was involved. I gave you the case number. You have the information. The people that invested, the sheriff that investigated it has all the names you need in there. That's why I provided it for you so that you guys could take a look at it and hear it from the sheriff's mouth instead of somebody who's a third party who only came in to try to fix what was wrong with FAM. So if you guys want those names and you want to figure it out, it's there for you. Every bit of it.
Okay, I have a question, just for clarification, Melanie. There were two reports to the sheriff's department, correct?
There are two, just.
Yeah, so Randy and I went and met with the sheriff's office. I don't know what the date was, but, um, they were referring to, um, lease payments that FAM didn't turn over during the closing and to, um, some fuel that they thought was missing before FAM took over the lease agreement. And all of that, um, was accounted for when we did our closeout with the AIPP lease. So we were aware that there were things, um, that were turned over, but it was accounted for during the closing. I don't have the, um, the case number for that. But that case is also closed because as far as we are concerned, were made whole through the closing with FAM.
Then after that, there was another report to the sheriff's office and there was some indication that there was an ongoing investigation or has that also been closed?
That, that's the one that Randy and I went to and that's also been closed.
Okay, I was unaware the second one had been closed. Is that what you were referring to?
I mean, they're both, I, I'm, I'm not assuming. I'm pretty positive the one you're discussing is the security deposits. Or are you discussing the first one? Which is security deposits?
It wasn't the security deposits. It was lease, um, payments that were not turned over to the city by the time we closed on November 22nd.
So in 2024?
20, yes, 24, yep.
So the num- the one I provided to you was closed. That's the only reason I provided to you. You guys wanted the information. I literally gave you everything you needed to, to look at that, that case number and get all the information you needed from it. I was hoping you guys would have questions about that. But obviously, nobody looked at it, so I have, I, I'm not going to give you anything without you guys wanting to get anything from it.
Melody, I have one more question, maybe for you and Danielle, if you know. Um, did any tenants come and give any rent to the city?
As of right now, I've only got one ACH pending payment.
Okay, only one.
In what period of time, Ms. Danielle?
It's going to be processed this month on the tenant.
No, I mean, you say you only received one. Is that one total for how long, what?
Yes, that's only one that's been received directly to the city. One tenant.
Since the 23rd of November?
Since the 1st of December.
1st of December. You didn't receive any between the 23rd of November and the 1st of December either? Okay.
What about fuel? Have you gotten anything from the QT pod? So, you guys will, because you got it changed in QT. We won't have access to it until that gets changed back or unless you guys cancel the lease. And then I'm pretty sure it's going to take more than a day to get that figured out.
What I've heard is that fuel is basically useless because it's so foul that nobody wants to take a chance with it. And if we had taken over the airport, we would have had to actually remove that and dispose of it.
So, who gave you that information? So, it's hearsay? Yeah. We've been fueling everybody that's coming out there.
So, I did not go to the airport and test the fuel. You're correct.
I don't think anybody has.
I'll jump in on that right there. We went out, just so, we went out, Danielle and I went out on Monday to go look, and we didn't go to pull from the fuel trucks. From my understanding, and you can tell me if I'm right or wrong, you guys are fueling primarily from the fuel trucks. Is that accurate or not?
For the most part, yes.
Okay. So, we went out. We didn't go over and start sumping or doing anything from the fuel trucks. We went out to the tanks that were there on site because we went to try to get an account for the tanks. We were told by somebody that was there, that was operating there, and who had shown me that he has like an agreement, but it's unsigned, right? So, but that person showed and said that they, we went out there to look at it and just check and see the condition. When we saw the condition, the condition of the sump and everything that we saw was pretty poor and looked like it hadn't been sumped for a while. Is that accurate, Danielle? So, it was determined that it was in pretty bad shape for one of them. Then we went to another, and when we did it, WASC came out, right? So, where the pump, where the pump is, the hand pump, WASC was coming out. At that time, the person who was there said, "We did that last Friday." So, WASC, not one, multiple. And then the pump, the pump didn't work. So, we saw multiple things that were issues with it. So, we figured at that time, like, we have to take word of what someone's telling us. We already saw the condition on one other side, that it wasn't in good shape, and the amount of debris, water, like, the amount, it was significant. So, that was a visual that we saw with our eyes, and the person that was there was like, yes, that is a lot. But we didn't go to the aircraft, and I'm guessing that's what you've been filling up with. We didn't go through the hole. We got pictures of the gallons and stuff like that, just in case somehow, some way, it comes back up. But that's what we did there. So, to just give you the...
Understood. When you guys drained that, you're saying you got water and debris out of it?
Do something to do.
When you were doing the sumping. So, that was at the bottom of the tank?
When you pump it, yeah.
Yeah. It's a daily inspection that's supposed to be done. So, have you guys been doing that every day?
That's not, this hasn't been, and I'll give you the, so, you know how we took over the airport or whether we did or we weren't. So, this is where, this may be going where you're going to go. So, I'll give the additional backstory where you are. When an email, I guess, and this is a synopsis, like, kind of overview of where we were.
Understood.
I believe there was an email that was sent by, I think it was sent by you to Jerry, I think, on Thursday or Friday that stated, "We just got your letter, Jerry, and we didn't have time to get the bond," or something along those lines. Like, "We just got your letter," right? And then kind of internally, like, well, kind of knew you had to get this bond. It was said at that Monday's meeting, so you know it was coming. So, despite waiting on the letter, but I don't know what that caused from your end. I wasn't in the picture yet or anything as another city manager there till Friday, right? So, the time was going along. When it came, when Jerry sent you the letter, which you were referring to, and end up said basically Friday at 5:00 PM. Is that accurate, Jerry, or something? What was the Saturday at 5:00 PM?
The letter to quit the premises was basically on, at 5:00 o'clock, delivered by, hand-delivered by Randy when he went out there to change the locks.
So, huh? The date the bond expired?
Saturday.
Okay, so...
It was not Friday, it was Saturday, but go ahead.
Yeah, so Saturday. And I accompanied Randy because I just wanted to see what I was walking into, what's happening, right? So, we went out there, and there was only one person there. I didn't see you. There was one person that we saw there, and I'm going to just go into who was there, right? So, there was one individual there that was loading up his car with things that he was taking, right? So, at that point, nobody heard anything. We went ahead, changed the locks per what the attorney's letter, and we did what we were supposed to do. Monday morning, we all got on a call just with each other and started going over what the game plan was to resume. And just the thought process is that you guys, the FAMCAVO, kind of abandoned, just walked away from it. So, we didn't know, I mean, just, okay, they didn't get it. They didn't say anything about the bond. I personally, I didn't receive a phone call. I didn't get anything. And I have Danielle Kelly's old cell phone, so I didn't get anything, a phone call to me that I seen. So, then, at that point, we started putting everything into place of what we're going to do to get back to, try to make the place operational, at least safe at the very least, and do what we can moving forward. Because this wasn't a great situation for us, being this is the holiday weekend. We have everything. This is coming up to, that week was going to be Thanksgiving, right? So, it wasn't until Tuesday at like 4:00 o'clock, or that I recall seeing something came in. They said, "I just want to let you know this was just sent to us, the bond." So, at that time, and we looked at it, we said, "Okay." But then we saw some of the deficiencies with the bond and saw, okay, was this, do we say it was backdated? What do we say here? We wouldn't quite know. But we said, "Well, it seems like you do have interest in maintaining." But at that point, we had already initiated, like, the plan to take it back over because we heard nothing. And at that time, we said, "You're trying to come get it back." And it was ultimately determined by the parties, Jerry, myself, Nick that's on, Mr. Claver that's on the, online, and Lowell, that let's let the council hear you out and say what you have to say, and then ultimately determine if you're going to get, that's why we kind of started, but we had to halt. So, now we're just here in the process, and that's where we are.
I understand.
That's exactly how everything got laid out.
I understand. So, you mentioned nobody calling you. So, FAM got an email stating that you guys were going to take over the demised premises. Did anybody call? First of all, who have you been talking to out at the airport? You specifically?
There's only been one person. There's two people that were out there.
Right, so...
And that person, when I showed up Monday, however it may be, already had a contract in his hand to assume airport operations, right? So, he already was like, but he stated, and he had on him, that he was working somehow or, you know, they were out the airport. They had a rental agreement with you like a tenant and performed an operation, but you had an additional something set up in agreement where they would perform certain services, and y'all were paying them.
Well, that's the guy that you brought to the meeting on Monday.
Mr. Moreno is here. And I did send, before the end of that week, I sent an email to Dr. Kelly saying, "Hey, we would like to put Umberto Moreno in charge of the ground operations per the AIPP." Because he is working under FAM. He does have an agreement. My concern is that you were only speaking with him. I was here at that meeting on Friday. If you wanted to get any and all information, you should have been calling the person that is FAM. You just said it, that he had a lease agreement or had an agreement to run the airport in a certain capacity. Nobody from the city called me to say, "Hey, we'd like to do a peaceful transfer. Let's get together and get some information." Nobody. The city just jumped on it and said, "This is what we're doing. We're going to take the lease payments, send out an email. We're going to take the demised premises," which you had a right to do. But if you wanted a clean transition, normally you get ahold of the people that have been there already. And I had been at this meeting before last, what, two weeks ago on that Monday, already telling you, "I'm trying to, I am trying to fix things out at the airport." That includes Mr. Moreno, which is why I'd sent an email already to Danielle Kelly to try to make sure that we were still meeting the agreements of the AIPP and giving notice that we wanted to change to certain individuals. So, I just, I appreciate your time. You guys have the information on who it is that put FAM in the position that it is today. I understand whatever decision you guys make. I'm just letting you know that FAM does still want to participate. This is kind of a decision of keeping the AIPP and keeping your, being able to keep the money that you guys make out at the airport and being provided to the city or just doing an agreement and taking a monthly rental fee. Because other than that, you can't take the amount of money that we would be providing through any of our CIP projects to do what you guys want to do and put it into the city funds. So, I just wanted to add that too. Do you guys have any other questions?
Yes, I do.
On November the 17th, at our last special meeting, you came before this board.
Speak close to your microphone.
You came before this board on November the 17th. That was our last meeting. Did you not understand the decision that this council made for the one that if you didn't meet that deadline of that bond date, what would happen? Did you not understand that?
So, I guess I didn't...
Hold on, let me finish.
Oh, you're not going to let me answer the question? Okay.
Did you not understand the consequences that could happen? Before we could even move forward for the 75 days extension that we gave you, you had to meet that date. And it was voted on for the one. You remember that? Did you not understand that?
I remember you guys had that conversation.
But did you not understand what the council said that day when they made that unanimous decision for the one? That that date had to be met before we could even move forward to the 75-day extension?
I heard what you said.
It's actually mentioned several times. You said, it was a conversation we had, but we were conversing with you, and it was mentioned several times.
There was a lot of back and forth. As a matter of fact, you went to, "I want to close the lease now," to, "I want to give 60 days," to, "I want to do 75 days," to, just, "I'm speaking now, please. I'm speaking now, please. So, I want the 75 days." No, because I had till the Saturday, the 22nd, to be able to get my bond in place. It wasn't ending on that Friday. It ended on that Saturday.
Right.
So, when you guys kept going back and forth, and I remember looking at you in the end, and you said, "Well, if they get a letter of credit or if they get a bond, and we'll see," is kind of how I expect. That's what I heard in the very end, because there was a lot of back and forth about what was going to actually happen with FAM. So, I was doing everything in my power to get this bond completed. It was my number-one priority.
And then you get here today and just listen to the conversation about the bond. We don't even know if it's legit.
Well, that's a simple fix.
I mean, there's a lot of accusations thrown around about the signature wasn't on it and all of that. So, I just wanted to know, you didn't understand it when you walked out the door, that when this council voted for the one about the bond date, did you not understand? Or it was just a lot of confusion going on? Because if it was, I think that you did a lot of, you came before this council, and you did a lot of talking. And I mean, you was talking. You did everything you could to convince this council to let FAM 1, FAM 2, FAVO, whatever you're calling yourself now. You did everything you could. And so, it surprises me that you walked out the door not understanding what had took place.
So, you say that I didn't understand. I'm telling you, I thought I understood. I looked at his eyes in the end and thought I understood exactly what was happening.
Okay.
I think my eyes are...
Well, you specifically were discussing my paperwork and the confidentiality. And then we're talking about how the bond needed to be met in some way, shape, or form, and left it at, "Well, we'll see." So, I took it, I guess, a different way than, I guess, how you guys thought it was.
Whatever's convenient now as opposed to what would have been convenient if you'd gotten the bond.
I mean, convenient or not convenient. I did get a bond, whether you guys accepted or not.
But you're spending a lot of time discussing the bond, which is, I think, is, you know, water under the bridge. It's either they don't accept it because you didn't meet the bond requirement, or you can convince them that you're still valuable to the city to go forward. That was the reason why we wanted to have you come and give your discussion. But you're spending a lot of time trying to make us look like we did something wrong. I don't think that that's very beneficial.
I just have one comment. I really pushed hard at that 17th meeting to try to get enough votes on this council to give you the opportunity to, one, give you the 75 days to see if you could prove to us that the new FAM could basically do the job and prove to us and come up with everything. And to me, it was very imperative and important and directly that we needed that bond by that Friday. For me, my personal opinion is if you wanted to prove to us that you were serious, you would have had that bond in place by Thursday, not by Saturday, Monday, whatever. I'm really very disappointed, but you didn't meet the date that we asked you to make. And I think that's very disappointing and makes us not completely trust moving forward with you. That's my opinion.
I understand. The bond is kind of out of my hands. I don't make that decision. I'm not the surety. But I am here to provide all the information you guys have been requesting for the last year. So, I... Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I just, I kind of feel like you are literally, not literally, spitting in our face, you know? We gave you a timeframe, and you spit in our face and told us, "Ah, I'll get it to them on Tuesday. They'll be fine." That's the whole attitude that I get from you. Everything is to the last minute. Ah, I'll get it tomorrow. They'll be fine. The cameras, I'll get them. They'll be fine. That's just my opinion. I don't know if the rest of the board shares that opinion with me. It's almost like you go right to the deadline, and then you just go over just a little bit, and you assume that we're going to be okay with it.
So, I don't make that assumption. I understand you guys.
Well, I mean, that's just, okay, then let's not call it an assumption. We'll call it my opinion because that's how I feel.
Right.
And I got more or less a statement, and it is a question. You said no one ever called you. You came before this council as if you're the man in charge. You're going to be running things, and I'm the man to talk to. So, if no one from the city called you on that deadline date, on the 22nd, then why didn't you call somebody? Or did you?
You'd already sent the email on Friday.
It doesn't matter.
Why doesn't it matter?
Because the date was, we still gave you that date. We gave that date to you. And now, if we had given that date to you, and then we did something before that date, to me, that's different. We gave him a date. If he came through with it on the 22nd, he did exactly what we told him to do. Regardless of what decision we had already made, we gave him to the 22nd. So, my question to you is, why didn't you call? Because you're throwing the city on the bus and all, you know, that they didn't call. They called everybody else, got in contact with everybody else but you. And did you leave here and say, "Here is my number. Call me for anything. And if you don't call me, I'll be calling you"? Did you do that?
My signature block and all my emails has my phone number, ma'am.
Okay, but did you call on that date? They say, "I'm not going to meet this bond date, you guys. I'm just not going to do it."
I did everything in my power on that Friday. As a matter of fact, when did you receive that email from me on Friday? Mr. Burr, do you know the time? Yeah, it was at 4:50. I'd been working on it all day. The surety is not, the bond is not something I can just procure, create. I can't do that. It has to go to a surety for somebody to provide it to you. And that's including if I went to a bank during that week to try to get a line of credit, I would have had to put something up. I would have had to try to figure something out. Which, by the way, we were providing collateral. I was going to the bank to try to get a line of credit. I was doing everything I could to get it from the outside. I understand that you guys made a deadline. I understand you took it as a slight that, hey, you thought maybe I was just sloughing it off. I didn't have to meet that date. That's not the problem. The problem is the timeframe that I had to go to somebody else to provide a document to you that would assure you of our possibility of moving forward. I couldn't do that myself. I can provide any and all documentation you're looking for that is related to FAM specifically or FAMCAVO, but I can't provide a surety out of nowhere. I have to be able to provide something for them to give something back to me. So, that's why it took so long. And in that email that I sent at 4:50 or around that time, I literally stated, "It doesn't end until tomorrow. Will you give me till Monday?" I wasn't even asking for another week. I said, "Give me till Monday, and you can do whatever it is you got to do." I asked that in that email. And immediately, I'm pretty sure it was already canned and ready to go, an email came back from Mr. Burr that stated, "We are taking over the demised premises per these points in the lease agreement." At that point, I said, these points in the lease agreement." At that point, I said, "All right, sounds like we're, you guys are moving forward. You said you were going to change the locks and take it over. That means we would have to come to you to be able to do anything else out at the airport."
But you did understand why Mr. Burr had to make that decision, right?
Oh, yeah, no, I understand now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, thank you.
As I said, we've heard the situation that we're in currently. Obviously, we need to make a decision as to if we want to continue, if we want to consider other things. So, at this point, I think everybody's pretty familiar with what FAM has done out there. We have a good feeling of what that would be going forward. So, I certainly would like to hear the other options and see if we can get to a resolution.
I'm sorry, before we do that, can we just go ahead and make a motion to term, matter of fact, I'll just go ahead and make the motion to terminate the contract with FAM, and then we can discuss what we're going to do afterwards. And that's my motion.
I'll second that.
Nick, is that, is that going to be an appropriate motion?
I mean, I'll defer to you on that, you know, in, in terms of procedure, but-
Well, can they terminate it tonight?
Oh, yeah.
Is there any additional notice that we need to send out?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll have to follow the procedures in the lease, but we can certainly, I, I think the council could vote to take that action, and then we can work to carry out that action.
Okay, so, the motion really should be for us to commence the process of terminating the lease, as opposed to terminating it tonight.
Okay, so move then?
Was that, that was your motion?
Yes, yes.
Jim, do you still wish to second that motion?
Yes, I do.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, and we have a second. Any questions on this motion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Okay, at this time, will you please outline what our options are going forward?
So, I had some assistance with Lowell on this. If we can go over a couple of the options, and then maybe elaborate a couple of things that we have at hand. If you'd like to go over the assignment, or however you would like to go over that. I mean, if this canceled, then they can sign.
Well, there's really kind of three options. Number one, you can staff it yourself. You can hire someone that's going to leave a void for a period of time. In the meantime, you could potentially ask another operating airport like Sebring if they could loan you someone to help operate the airport temporarily. Option two would be kind of a combination of option one and do an RFP for a management contract to hire a firm to come out there. You would define what's in that management contract. For example, do you want them to do everything, okay, except you continued on the airport, and you continue to be the sponsor of the airport, okay? And in that situation, they would essentially run the airport for you on your behalf. Or you can narrow that down, and say they only operate the airport, you do all the financial for the airport, you do all the grants for the airport. So, that's really a combination that you have to outline what you're comfortable with in that RFP. So, the third option is you have an AIPP lease, okay? You can ask FAM if they're willing to assign it to someone that is acceptable to the city and to FAA. Okay, it takes about two years to get a lease like that done with FAA. So, that's an option on the table if you want to continue in the structure that is there today.
Okay.
And so, and kind of, you know, in, in a stopgap, so we do the RFP, and we get in there and try to go through that, that process. We need to have somebody out there taking care of the airport right away. So, we need to try to figure out how to staff that, you know, get that staffed internally, or potentially go out to somebody under emergency provisions. We did come up with some agreements that we were talking about, of people to step in, in for us, who can go out there right away and fill in and do the, perform the airport operations. Financial wise, we do have, that we would maintain all the, all the financials. When it comes to the landscaping and mowing the grass and everything, we would end up doing that in-house. And depending on how long this took place, we would end up having to hire staff, or we can, if it's short-term, we can just kind of borrow some staff, and they can go out there and do that. The two proposals that we did receive for the, to perform management duties was, one was from Two Fly, and, let me see, I got the proposals here. So, their, their, Two Fly's proposal was that they would perform airport management duties for $22,000 per month, and then they requested whatever our, they requested to purchase fuel from us at whatever our cost was, plus 50 cents per gallon. And they would be out there operating that airport seven days a week from 8 o'clock, 8:00 AM till 4:00 PM. We received another, yes.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Who's, who's the, what's the name on that? Who, who runs that?
Mark, I've been speaking with Marc Issot, Issot.
Spell his last name? And he's out of where?
He's a, he's going to be in, he already painted the hangar that's on the, kind of the northwest side of the airport. So, let's get that blue and gray, I think, as a color hangar. So, they're going to be starting that. Huh?
He's South American?
Yeah.
If you're speaking to Mike, if you're going to-
Yeah, if you're going to make comments, you'll have to come to the microphone there. And I apologize to you, sir, I'll get you right up there.
I believe they're a very large international company. It's been around for a long time.
Just give your name and organization for the record.
Yeah, Humberto with Humberto Waino from My Flight Academy. Yeah, he's from Merrick. He just brought out International Arrows at Lakeland. You know, he's just waiting for DOJ, I guess, come in. But, yeah, he's from Merrick.
They're a large flight school of some sort?
Yeah, yes, yes. Well, yeah.
Are they the ones that just lost both of their airplanes? Oh, you lost them?
That's me.
Oh.
There were three of them.
Okay.
So, I jumped the gun here, but that was their, that was what they proposed. The other company was Flight Academy, which Humberto is here. The proposal was submitted that they would, on all fuel sales, would get 50 cents per gallon on fuel sales. Prior to Two Fly getting here, they would operate Monday through Friday and be available on call. And if any vendor came, or any person came in with the plane that wanted to get fuel over, over on the weekend, then they would go out there, because that's basically the revenue source that they have, and they would make money off of that. Once Two Fly was operational, that would be additional revenue for them. And he stated to me that they would, would work seven to seven, 12 hours a day, seven days a week. And they would be doing that. And they would all be performing the duties. If you want me to go over the duties specifically, I can, if you desire, but it, in, in basic, it's, it's, they are managing the airport, they're making sure the signage is good. If there's a light out or whatnot, then they can call, and they can go to get it fixed, but we will ultimately pay that fee. So, it's like a management company, but we're paying the fee. But the revenues that we get from rent, the revenues we get from fuel, all that would all, would come to us minus the 50 cents per gallon that they have. And we were working, we were working internally on the gas, so trying to get that right, and, and, and contact our, our fuel distributor about how we're going to go about getting, having our trucks set up and taking it on from, from that aspect. The, the last, I guess, the last option would be, how do we, like, do we want to bring this in-house? Do we ultimately want to have an airport manager? Back in the day, we looked at potentially having an airport manager out there. The, the options for that, I mean, just the salary, we'd end up bringing that to a salary level commensurate with our other directors that are within the city. And, you know, based off qualifications, that's how we would go about paying for that. In, in turn, while we're looking for somebody to do, to perform those functions, we do have staff that can go out there and assist on a day-to-day, that have operated that airport in the past. It's not optimal, but we do have individuals that can go out there. We have some trained staff. One of the, one of our employees actually worked in the aviation industry for 15 years, and six years in the, in the military. So, is very familiar with, with airport operations. He said he would step in and assist, and he would basically be out there. He runs, he's our, one of our IT assistants, but he could be out there assisting and performing that. He felt very confident. I spoke with Matt. You know, we went over it, how would he feel as far as him working out there, and would he be good with it? Matt said, "Matt's a team player," so he was willing to assist with that. Danielle could help with some of the, the knowledge of the, the fuel sales and some of the other specifics, get him up and going. Said potentially a week to get him really feeling good to where he can do his thing. And then he can kind of maintain until we get an airport manager and, and ultimately we decide to go hire employees. We did look at the financials of this. I mean, currently, even as it stands, we, we lose money at the airport because of certain revenues that we pay. We do carry insurance regardless out there. So, it's still a, like a money-losing proposition for the city. But actually, with, with us stepping in and doing what we need to do, we may be able to actually save some money versus even where we are with the AIPP until those people, till that company was able to get on their feet and making, making money. So, there are several things. I, I don't think anything is absolutely optimal, but we do have the choices in front of us that we can make a determination, the council can make a determination of what you all decide to do, and, and we'll do our best to, to implement that going forward.
Very good. Before we get too much in the details of those options, we did have a question there. Just give your name and address to the record, please.
Charles Lanfair, 501 Lake Lotila Drive.
Yes, sir.
I'm a private pilot out at the airport, store my plane there. I've used all the amenities out there. My plane's been painted there. The work's been done on my plane there. I bought all my fuel there, which now I'm a little scared what I've done. But, no, I've, so I feel like I have a vested interest in the airport, to see it be successful. And another, there's a fair number of folks like me out there that have the same desire. I spoke to Rick Hayes tonight. He would be gladly to step in as a temporary airport manager. If you guys chose to go that route, until you found somebody more permanent, myself and many others, be happy to sit on a, an advisory board for the airport, or on a board of directors and assist the airport manager, along with the city manager. We'd love to see it stay city-owned and operated. And I really do have a strong belief that with the right personnel in place out there and support from the local community, we could probably turn that into a, a moneymaker for the city and not a call center.
Right.
And just wanted to, to say that you do have options, and there's a lot of us that are willing to help however we can.
Sure.
And Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Before you go, I just wanted to ask you one question. So, we basically have what, what looks like two viable options. One is, you know, have city staff do everything with the airport director and a couple of staff members to take care of all the maintenance and things out there. The other is to have an RFP for an operator, and we'd have to define what capacity they are an operator. Of those two options, do you have an opinion as to which route you think would be best?
Just shooting from the hip, my knee-jerk reaction is I'd love to see it maintained in city hands and controlled and operated by the city. Love to see a city airport manager put in place. And again, I think that, I'm not sure what the political process is moving forward to do all that, but I do know there's a number of us that would gladly help. And I'm not asking for any money, wouldn't seek any money. We just want to see a successful airport out there. And, and there are so many things that need to be brought up to speed, in my opinion, you know, from quality, the, the condition of the taxiways, the lighting. I just, I flew an instrument approach in there on November 8th at 8:30 PM, and none of the lights worked on 10 and 28, which wasn't applicable to my approach at that time, but still, they were out. Many of the taxiway lights are out. The signage on the taxiways and roomways is out. The lighting in the back, in the hangars where I'm at, is out. The condition of the asphalt backs there is, is really subpar. The gates haven't worked. The instrument beacon's out. The AWAS is out. I couldn't receive the transmission on the weather conditions on the field, which is really important when you're trying to fly an instrument approach. So, there are many things that, you know, as a, as a, just a personal private pilot coming in my home base of operation, I'd love to see us be able to get that fixed. So, just from a safety factor standpoint. And we take a lot of pride in the airport, and want to see it do, be very successful.
Excellent.
I, I have a question for you too, and maybe you can tell us or not, but I heard, I understand that the city, Sebring has actually city employees or city management that runs the Sebring Airport. Do you know if that's true?
I can't speak to that. I do think that seeing what they've done in, over the last 30 years out there, 40 years since they've implemented the airport authority and their board of directors, and the airport manager with Mike, under Mike Willingham's guidance. I believe that, I've seen, they've done a great deal, many deal of things that have been very beneficial, and that's been a, a great cost benefit to the city. And I think the ni, the dynamic of our airport is much different than theirs. And so, they may be willing to, to lend a hand. Mike even might be willing to lend a hand to, to help us manage some things out there, to help develop out the rest of the airport there in a fashion that could benefit all of us in aviation and the, the local community.
Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate your time tonight. And just so everybody knows, in my opinion, I do not want to go back to the AIPP program. That was a long, drawn-out program that we were, invested a lot of time and money with, with Lowell on the attorney, and, you know, we thought we had something really good going for us that took a very, very long to get there. And finally, we got there, and the process just didn't end up what we expected, or what we thought, or what we hoped for. And I don't think we want to go down that, that, that hole again. I think we need to either have, like you said, city management people, that we could hire somebody professionally to do it, or the other option is to hire a professional company. But then again, you're looking at probably a, a lot larger expense. But one of those two options, but I do like the idea, if we could hire somebody that is very knowledgeable, and I'm sure, like you said, Rick Hayes is probably could help pick somebody out for, find somebody for us too, as well as yourself. I think that would be my process, our direction to go to would be best for the city, to know that we have somebody to go to on a regular basis and say, "How's things going out there?" And come and report to the city manager and the city council, and give us updates as we needed. So, but thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
I, I have a question, though, for Jim, or maybe a suggestion. I do have a question for you, Mr. Lanfair, but I'll come back to that.
Go ahead.
So, we had an airport board before, right? It was more of a city board. It was before FAM came in. I guess FAM-
It was a CRA board, was it not?
Well, it was kind of like a CRA slash, but even if it was CRA, but anyway.
Both.
Both, okay. So, my idea would maybe to be get an airport board with Mr. Jarrett, Mr. Hayes, Mr. Lanfair, Dr. Danzy, Mr. Renfro, all of the people who have years-long experience of airport knowledge. They would be volunteers. They would actually assist the city as to what improvements needed to may, be made for it to prosper. They would report back to the city. We could designate a person such as, I don't know, Danielle, or, sorry, or maybe the IT guy that you spoke about, just so we wouldn't be involved in any extra costs to hire somebody to tell us what to do. We have perfectly good people here that can do it. But that's just a thought, because I'd like to see the airport board come back. So, my question for you is, do you use the airnav.com system to find out NOTAMs?
I use an app called ForeFlight.
Does anybody use the airnav.com? Do you know?
I, I can't speak to that, not that I know of.
Okay. Okay, well, I was just wondering, because I noticed on there that, that hasn't been updated since October 16th, when were they issued NOTAVs, NOTAMs, I'm sorry, for a notice to airmen. You don't know- You don't know if anybody utilizes that?
Not that specific system that you use, but, um, there, there's a, a number of different apps or, um, options through, um, the FAA where you can, um, go onto those for your flight planning as a pilot and get all the information that you need. The only thing that you, that you don't get from those would be like the last minute when you're coming in and, um, you know, if the AWAS, which is the Automated Weather Obser, Observation System on-site, isn't reporting and it's instrument conditions, you can't tell what's, what's going on at the field.
Okay. My only question, are there any requirements as far as us going forward to obtain grants and any, anything like that as far as what kind of qualifications the manager has to have out there?
No, ma'am. The, that's up to the city to decide. Um, if you do a grant application, there will be requirements in the grant application that have to be filled out and you may have to have some assistance with that.
Okay.
May I have a question for Jason? Jason is the, um, IT assistant. Is he on Zoom?
Uh, I believe so. Um, he, he was on earlier. Matt, is he still there?
I, I have a couple of questions for him, if I may.
Sure.
Jeremy?
Okay. We, I guess until you give him there, you can, go ahead.
Well, I was actually going to ask Matt a different question. I seen him shaking his head when, uh, we were talking about, uh, Sebring's airport operations, as if you were familiar.
Yeah, so they used to be a customer, uh, Michael, who's the executive of the airport and the board. And what I understand is the, the board is people involved in the airport, just like you're talking about, this people that actually.
An advisory board.
Right, right. So rather than having, you know, a council, like you guys would have to another night, taking 90 months ago, that, you'd have people that care and know what you're doing and they can direct the person that has the responsibilities, you know, directly for the city. So that's how I understand that works at the airport.
Okay.
Um, and to, and to Matt, um, get Jeremy on the line, I have, um, well, I'll get to that later. Cause it's, it's taking me in a totally different direction and I'll wait on that. But I had some questions for Jeremy in reference to, um, his skills. I, I just want to talk to him, ask him a couple of questions.
Yeah, I just sent him a message on you.
Just go over something also. We did develop, uh, we, we put together a form for, uh, 10, like a 1099 for an independent contractor. So if we wanted to get someone, uh, more expedient, you know, uh, with having to do the background check, right? So if we were to go that option, that's something that we could do in the interim along for whatever, you know, a set rate that they, it's an agreed amount. And then we can go ahead and, and, and get that going. So if that's, if you, I guess authorize me to enter into that agreement, then that would be good.
Yeah, we had a question right there. You just have to come up to the microphone, give your name and address or organization.
Hi, yes, sir. My name is John Hurst. Uh, I'm, uh, at Sport Aero Services, 211 King Airway Northwest, uh, in Lake Placid, Florida, at the Placid Lakes Airport. Um, I've been a proud resident here in Highlands County for 20 years now and, um, also a aviation professional, um, including, uh, airport management and airport professional as well. Um, and, uh, I benefited greatly from the airports here, including Avon Park, Sebring and even our private airport in, uh, Lake Placid. And I have a big interest in seeing these airports, um, flourish and survive. Um, we've taken a good look at the, um, Avon Park Airport and feel that the airport is underperforming. It has potential to do much better than it is right now. Um, and, uh, have identified a number of, a number of areas. Number one is just take care of the customer. Um, on a previous assignment with another regional airport here in Florida, we implemented this program. We took the airport from, um, losing money over the past 40 years. When we took it over, it was currently running approximately a $300,000 deficit annually. Within a year and a half, we turned that into 160, 100, sorry, $150,000 surplus that we could put in the bank and use for, um, future, um, improvements to the, to the airport. Um, so I guess what I'm saying is there are options. I'd like to know, I'd like you to know that I'm available to help the city however I can with the airport. Um, and, uh, I'd certainly like to speak with you in the future about how we can move forward, possibly with an airport authority perhaps, um, our airport board. Uh, we can structure it a number of different ways and, uh, we have, we do have options for you.
Sure. Yeah, well, before you go, it seems to me that, uh, we basically have two issues here. One is a, a long-term plan, one is a very short-term plan. So we do have to get, uh, staff and/or company out there to take care of things until we can have the required meetings to see what we want to do long-term, establish that authority, et cetera, et cetera. Um, do you have any, um, I guess recommendations as to what you would do in the short term?
Absolutely. Um, so in the short term, we actually laid out a, a, a detailed plan here, uh, in phases. So, um, you know, phase one would be mostly exploratory. Um, find out what's going on, maybe even do a little bit of forensic accounting and stabilize things. Just basically stop the bleeding, um, in the short term. Get the airport up and running. Fuel farm is extremely important. That is the lifeblood of the airport. And that's what, that is also, that should be the profit center of the airport, is the fuel farm. That's where we turned it around at the, on my previous assignment. Um, there is a potential, a great potential for expanded fuel cells there. Um, so yes, safety is number one and that would be our first priority is safety. Establish that. Make the fuel safe. Make sure the airfield is safe. Make sure that we have lights on the airfield. Get that AWAS up and running. Make sure you have a beacon 24 hours. Um, that's number one. Um, then, um, then we would move into, um, uh, phase two would be, um, you know, corrective actions, grant compliance, um, basically making nice with FAA and FDOT. Um, fortunately, I'd like to say I do, I do have a fairly good relationship with District 1 at FDOT with Dawn. I also had a good relationship with, um, the FAA. I know the gentleman is not, uh, the, um, gentleman of the ADO no longer represents this area, but, um, uh, we also worked well together. That would be number two. Um, and then, um, you know, number three going forward would be, again, to make this place profitable. Start putting money in the bank.
Well, specifically in phase one of the stabilization, would you achieve that with, uh, city staff or with outside staff or, or company?
Again, we have a number of different options. Um, that's what I'd like to discuss with the city. I need to understand what resources the city has to do that. Uh, if, if the city, um, if the city does have good resources, that's great. That, that's, that's the way we can start right now. Um, get that airport stabilized. Um, going forward, um, again, there's a number of different ways. Ideally, my, the structure is Sebring. Sebring is a great example. Uh, they have an awesome airport authority there. Um, and air, airport professionals, um, ha, uh, have operational control of the airport all the time. Um, and we can see how well that worked out. There's no reason that can't be replicated here.
Any other questions for him or any other comments? Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thanks for, thanks for your time.
Jeremy, you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Jeremy, I have a question for you. How are you today?
Yep, man. Good, how you doing?
Um, Jeremy, what branch is service you serve?
Air Force.
Okay, and, um, and you worked at a air, airport all, all of those? How many years did you do?
I did six years at Charleston, uh, airfield and then I did 10, 11 years for, uh, government contracting.
And, and pretty much.
It was, it was, I was in no specific place. I traveled all over the world, just random airfields here and there.
Oh, so you worked at many airfields?
Yes, ma'am.
And so what are your duties when you worked at those airfields? Exactly, just don't, you don't have to go a long list. Just give us some ideas of some of the things that you did when you worked at those airfields.
In my beginning stages, I started out just as a mechanic. Um, as the years progressed, I switched over to a technician, avionics.
Mechanic working on the airplanes?
Airplanes, yes.
Okay.
Um, I, I became a lead in both of those positions, leading a group of mechanics and avionics technicians. After that phase, I was in a, um, you would call it a support section. So I would handle all the, um, hazmat, like, you know, special programs like, um, full calibration, hazardous waste, you name it, vehicles. And at the end of my career, I became a production superintendent. I was running, um, airfield operations for, um, an undisclosed amount of aircraft, um, upwards of 20 and some, 20, 22 aircraft for 20, um, for operations, high ops tempo. And I was, everything, I did everything. Like I would schedule the fuel, I would, um, plan flights with the satellite communications teams in the United States. I would address safety concerns and I would bring those safety concerns to the appropriate, uh, individuals, which would be like, for instance, lighting. If I had an issue with lighting on a runway, I'd bring that to my civil engineering team and they would come out and fix it. Um, I, I have a vast array of knowledge for airfield operations.
Okay. All right. For Jeremy too. Jeremy, when you were at the end of your service, did you retire?
I did not retire. I, like I said, I got out of my Air Force career. I only did six years in the Air Force. I got out in 2016 and in 2016, up until March of this year, I was doing, um, government contracting.
Okay, so you were ju, you just, you just used up your time and, and didn't enlist, re-enlist?
No, I did enlist. I was enlisted from 2011 to 2016, I was active duty Air Force. And then once I got out of active duty, I became a Department of Defense government contractor.
But you weren't discharged in any way?
You were honorably discharged, not dishonorably discharged.
Yes, I was honorably discharged. I have my DD214 that says that.
Okay.
Ever run an airport?
Operation, like airport manager? I have never held that title.
Okay. At somebody on Zoom, is, is there a way to identify this person?
Neil Butterworth?
Okay. We got a Neil Butterworth.
Yes, Neil Butterworth.
Yes, sir. And your address is?
Yes, sir. Uh, I am at 1605 State Road 64 West. I am part of Florida Aviation, sir.
Okay. Yeah, we just had to have a, a name and an address or an organization to go with the comments is, is why I'm asking.
Absolutely. I'm just curious if he's actually run an airport before.
Okay. Uh, Jeremy, would you mind answering the question?
I wouldn't say I've ran an airport before. I've led, I've ran 12-hour shift operations at an airfield.
Got it.
Uh, actually run fueling and everything else from the airport?
Yes.
Okay, you actually fueled the airplanes yourself?
Yes. I've used JPA and I have gas.
And how were the tanks or the trucks supplied?
They, uh, the. Yes.
Okay. Uh, just curious.
I don't think we've ever had an exchange Zoom to Zoom.
The external job interview.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I, I, I'm sorry. I, I'm, I'm trying to be quiet, but I'm just trying to also understand what's going on tonight and to see who's the best fit to this airport.
No, absolutely. We appreciate it. Can you help us? This thing?
And of course, with the military, there's.
I, I have a.
Sure.
I just, I just want to add something. It's, it's a, it was a stopgap. It says, it's a fill-in, uh, that this is the proposition to fill in to get to where we need to be.
Sure.
So it's not, you know, that's, that's where we are right now.
I agree.
Okay.
I agree. And I'm, I'm just looking for the best person right now. Uh, I'm ex-military as well, but I'm just curious to who we have going on here right now. And I'm, I'm very interested. I have a lot of state at this airport. I've spent a lot of money in this hangar, so I just want to continue.
Thank you.
Mr. Butterworth, are you the, are you the painter? Do you paint?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's one of the things we do.
Okay.
I am part of Florida Aviation. As you guys refer to me as Hoffa. There's been allegations that we've been dumping hazardous waste and we have not been. We have tried and been doing everything the correct way. We have been rebuilding this building the correct way. So I, I'm hoping to continue and everything goes very well.
Okay. Very good. We do have another question here. Mr. Macklin, just give your name and address.
Tom Macklin, 6009 East Main Street or County Road 64E, depending on the sign you look at. Um, I don't really have a question, just an observation that comes from a number of years. And there's a, there's a few of us. Ms. Sutherland, Mr. Foster, Ramona's in the background, probably the longest-tenured people in the room, at least this evening. I remember when we had a very active, knowledgeable airport committee. Long before we had an Avon Park, uh, CRA at the airport. Fantastic people that were serving on it. And I thought it was probably the best during that period of time that the airport operated, just because of the wealth of knowledge and the personal involvement and interest that they had in the success of the airport. I also remember when, and, and I'm sure Ms. Sutherland will as well, when we brought on a airport consultant, if I remember correctly, that it was Wilbur Smith and Associates. Affirmed here. And they worked wonderfully with the committee that we had at the time. Uh, we also during that period of time had, uh, CB Shirey as our city manager who had, he was an Air Force retiree, wasn't really in the operation of the airport, but he was knowledgeable of airport operations. I remember when we flew all over the state, different ones of us, when we were looking at layouts for new FBOs. I remember us going to battle with Florida Power when they were putting the high lines out off the west end of the airport. At that time, I don't know the designations now, but I know they were 422 and 927. And the battles that we fought getting the lines lowered at the end of 927 because of the approach being so low coming in. But we had a fantastic committee and I would like to see something like that put back in place. And in hearing Mr. Lanfair speak tonight and even bringing up Mr. Hayes's name, and I know there's probably some others that would love to get back in it if they thought they were really going to have an opportunity to make the airport better again. What I also like is in-house accountability. That's just me, because we kind of see the perfect storm that we have developed, you know, between, you know, FAM, the city, a city manager leaving, uh, an interim coming in and this, this chaos. But if we have some consistency that has accountability in-house with fantastic people that are vested in the airport more than just making a dollar, I think that's the best way to go for Avon Park. And however you put those pieces together, uh, that's between you all here. But I remember how it used to be and when we were building hangars and building a new FBO and it was vibrant and I think you can do it again. But I, I just think there has to be the desire to do it. And I know you have the people in the community that want to see it happen. So that would be my preference.
All right. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
Maria Sutherland, 900 West Main. And to compound what Mr. Macklin was saying, because I was going to suggest the same thing. I was wondering, who is the engineer of record at the airport right now? Do we have an engineer of record with the city? And if so, were they included in the airport as the airport engineers?
I'm wondering if it's Kim Lee Horn.
The last engineer of record was Kim Lee Horn on the master plan.
So they, in essence, are the ones that actually write the grants for the airport. There's $450,000 sitting right now at the ADO, at the FAA office in Orlando for the AWAS. And that is just waiting to be procured in terms of who's going to manage that grant. And typically, your engineer of record is who gets paid out of that grant. Therefore, the city doesn't have to hire someone to do that. And that same airport engineer is usually who reports to your airport board. And they run under the direction of the needs of the airport board based off of the 10-year plan that the FAA and FDOT put together and they get their funding 10 years in advance or at least in writing, so that you know what's coming down the pike. And any engineer that works on an airport would know this. I would hope that either Kim Lee Horn, I know that Amherst was before Kim Lee Horn and Amherst was part of fam. Um I forgot the gentleman's name, but he was here at the last meeting. But if there is no RFQ for the airport, it would be highly suggested that you pursue that because the engineer would end up doing your procurement. They set together your specifications for your construction. They do the oversight of your construction and then they do the closeout for you. And they monitor every expense that's out there. And to get that money that's sitting at the FAA right now, I guarantee there's FDOT money sitting there, but it's probably not been procured because of the issues that were held with fam. But you really need an engineer of record to get started right away to come back and report exactly what the status of the airport is in regards to future funding, potential future funding, and as well get the airport board established so that that person can, that firm can report to that board and that board will make its recommendations to this council. And there was an airport board that was combined with the CRA. They both mimicked one another. They were highly attended. We always had quorum and they were highly engaged.
Any other comments? You have something?
Humberto Flight Academy. I feel a little bit too uh a little bit guilty and I feel bad for fam um because without me finding what I found out, because I'm the one who found out the problems at the airport. Okay? I was uh contacted by Michael Powles on April uh to find out the problems of the hangars and the other money missing. And I did. And I brought it up to light. Um I've been at the airport since twenty-two. And a lot of these guys know me, Remfro, Mr. Lampier, they all know me there. I've been doing work, trying to help out fam. Because a lot of times nobody was there and I had to go and park the planes and fuel tr- you know, fuel the aircrafts and whatever the case is. That's when JT and uh Mike Powles were were in charge. I was approached by them on April to be contracted to work, you know, under them to oversee the hangars. I brought the hangars up to a hundred percent. If any light needed to be changed, I changed them. You know, I try to do the best I can with what I had. So, you know, I just, you know, I I I don't know what else to say, but guys, you got to make a decision quick, okay? Because I get the call from the military. You got a military base there, blue air. They're coming on next week. The same week, you got the old Fox Cars coming in there, a hundred and twenty-two planes. Who's going to help you park those planes? Okay? I mean, meanwhile, you got blue air military taking off. So that got to be ready. You're going to be busy from now to the twenty-seventh of February. You got twelve tw- you got twelve T-six coming in. You got five Sikorskis coming in. And you got F eighteen. So where you going to put all those planes? Do you have anybody who got knowledge of that? What are you going to do with it? Where are you going to park them? How are they going to park them? Well, something to discuss.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
So Matt, if if it's decided tonight that we select Jeremy, how soon can we, can, I mean, can he start like tomorrow? Is that is that even a possible thing? And and if he does, is is he able to handle the administrative part of it? Or is this going to be a split job where Danielle does some of it, the administrative part, and he does the other maintenance and and and?
I mean, you guys can set it however you want. I would assume that if there's airport specific stuff, that it would be Jeremy doing the operation stuff. And if there's anything as far as grants and finance and all that kind of stuff, that would I would assume that would be on Melody, but you guys can
Danielle, because yeah, finance.
Finance, yeah, sorry.
So so here's my question, Jason. Um obviously, there's going to have to be some present out there at the airport, right? Between these two staff, right? If we choose these two staff, right?
Yes, I I mean, you have the one, you have the one staff that's, he would do that. The assistants would be Danielle assisting um to get him up to speed. And then other things, we would have to then look to bring people in to try to to hire for for those positions or try to shift people to get them up to speed as fast as possible from current operation and just see how that goes. Uh may may work great, may not, not sure, but um that's that's like he was um Humberto was talking about, you know, uh taking the aircraft and making sure they're parked in the right spots and and everything that goes in with the airport management. Um you know, that's that's more than what one person does if they were to get that, I gotta say onslaught, but that that large amount of people coming in, that's one person. Whereas what he was stating, I mean, that this was a three-person operation is what they they're proposing to have. And if you want, I I think it's probably in the best interest, I just read off what the duties were. Y'all want to hear that? So operator duties, and this was was in the in the agreement. And this agreement, by the way, we kind of came up with this disagreement, we can cancel with a ten days, ten-day notice, okay? So we can, we can do that. And if if with whatever we decide to do. So we can get going there and then s- start staffing our airport, like say, we want to bring it in-house, and then we can go and say, okay, we're going to bring it in-house, but he's got it right now. The people to do it. He's already out. He's a flight academy. He's already out there. He has a vested interest of just of of doing that, but everybody wants to see the airport succeed.
Is that the, is that the agreement you had any work on? It's just different or different agreement?
Uh there were, we had the two, there was a, there was two agreements you worked on. One was uh one for the the contractor.
Right.
And the other one was for the
Manager.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So those those are rough drafts, so we will
Right, we, yeah, we can work, but just it's
Don't sign some, don't sign somebody tomorrow.
Well, no, we're we're close, we're close to having it, but with the direction of what, how you all want to move, where we can go. So operator duties. Airport operations, daily opening and closing, fueling operations, marshaling, customer service, FAA, FDOT, NFPA compliance, wildlife monitoring, emergency readiness and daily oversight. Administrative responsibilities, and this would be on their side. Hiring, supervision, payroll, compliance, fuel logs, the fuel logs would end up, you know, that would be us. SDS, safety records, monthly reports. Facility oversight, daily inspections, reporting issues, oversight of lighting, gates, signage and coordinating repairs with city approval. Facility manager, that the operator shall appoint a qualified facility manager, uh responsible for inspections, oversight, reporting, supervising building systems, ensuring safety and compliance. Hangar management, all hangars and airport structures remain exclusive property of the city. City retains a hundred percent of all hangar rental income. The operator shall administer hangar operations, including tenant coordination, routine inspections, reporting, access control, coordination of repairs with city approval. And um this agreement provides no tendency or occupancy occupancy rights to the manager. That would be us. Fuel operations, the city shall provide all fuel for, so we would purchase the fuel, right? Um the the operator shall operate and maintain all airport fueling equipment, provide fueling services to aircraft. The operator shall receive no portion of fuel revenue and fuel pricing may be set solely by the city. Grounds maintenance, the operator is not responsible for grounds maintenance, lawn care, landscaping, a large area mowing. These duties remain solely within the city. So that's everything that they would be doing. Um and they can do that um in between the two companies, like, because I gave you all two options of of who submitted. We did send it out to seven, I think it's like seven people we sent or companies that we sent it out to and to see what their response was. Um for and many had questions like wanted to go further in depth, and that was something that we couldn't do more on like an emergency basis. They said, where where can we get these employees from? Well, like, he has, he has employees that he can put at this. And and Two Fly has people that they can, they can put towards this operation. If they didn't have it and they have to go out and get it, then they just didn't, they didn't bid on it. So um but that's currently what's in front of us. And if that's the route that we decide to go, we could do that. And that's, that's not permanent. It goes along. It it, for instance, whichever one you pick, but just say you you were to pick Humberto with the Flight Academy, that's fifty percent on the, or fifty cents on each fuel sale. Which alt- um we can pass that on to um to the customer. So alt- almost, I don't want to say free, but we can pass it on to the customer. Now we have them out there running the airport and doing what they need to do. We could still put uh staff and have Jeremy out there and kind of gain some knowledge or just be out there and because uh we could do that as well. Um while we decide what it is that we want to do or the council decides what you all want to do. Um and I just try to give you his best information, options available to you all.
Okay, so uh fifty cents a gallon.
Can I step in, sir?
Go ahead. Just give your name and an address again.
Can I step in?
Yes, sir. Just give your name and address again.
Neil Butterworth, sixteen oh five.
Yes, sir.
Neil Butterworth.
Yes, sir.
Part of Florida Aviation. Humberto been out here doing this stuff every day. He's actually took it upon himself to, I had to teach him how to mow. He's been mowing. He's got his crew mowing. He's also doing all the fueling. He's taking care of all the aircraft. He and I work together. You guys have no aircraft tug. I have an aircraft tug. We move airplanes around. We do a lot for this airport. He's trying to make it right. I think he is your best choice.
Okay. Any questions for him?
I I don't really have a question, but I have a statement. Um before we just maybe assign Mr. Humberto in to the flight with the Flight Academy, I I think we need to do some vetting on these companies. I I don't, I wouldn't feel comfortable making a decision tonight about who we put in there. I I would like to see Danielle or Melody run the administrative part, Jeremy run the other, and then we put the RFQ, RFP, whichever one we decide to do that, because, I mean, on a whim, no offense, Mr. Humberto, but I I feel like we need to vet everybody that goes out there now. Or or we're going to end up in the same position we were.
I have something.
Can I ask you, can I ask you a question, ma'am?
Yes.
Can I ask you a question, ma'am?
Yes.
Who do you have to run the fuel farm right now that's certified?
Is Jeremy certified to run a fuel farm, the fuel?
Jeremy, are you certified to run a fuel farm?
I certified run a few, and for the Air Force and the Department of Defense contracts I was working on, we did not have to have a certification to fuel and maintain avgas and JPA.
So is that a requirement of our, for our fuel farm?
Yes.
Pardon me?
Yes, ma'am. That is a certification to run fuel in this airport.
And how long it takes to get a certification, sir?
Uh Humberto, can you answer that?
Um I got all the certifications uh on the wall there. Oh, I got sixteen, I think.
But how, how long would it take?
Three months. You got to take
Humberto, how would it take for someone else to get certified?
Three months.
And he has it all right now.
Danielle, you didn't run the fuel farm at one time?
What is that? The fuel farm is the uh trucks.
The fuel farm was um self-serve. The, at the jet truck was contracted to Kevin Casely. Um he operated the fuel truck for any jet um transactions.
Okay, so you're saying the certification needs to be done on the fuel truck?
Fuel trucks, you need, you need to be certified to fuel trucks to the planes, avgas and 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 jetty.
Understood.
Yes.
Yeah, so do we, do you feel like you need the vetting just for this temporary period that we're going to be trying to transition? You know, uh or is it better just to go ahead to somebody we know has been working out there already? I mean, I understand, I agree with, I agree with the, you know, vetting and all that in the in the long run for anybody permanent.
So you're saying temporary for three months until he can get his certification? Is that what you're saying, Mr. Jerry?
Well, the the agreement that was proposed can be canceled in ten days.
Ten days, so.
Basically, it can serve as long as we want. You just have to give a ten-day notice.
Right. So, I mean, we we're putting out a fire at this point.
Right.
Okay, so we would, if we agree tonight, we would, tomorrow, when the contract is executed, it would be ten days. They would have ten days and we could do a a vetting between that time. Is that what you're saying?
I hope they don't sign a contract tomorrow, but yes, that's the ten days.
As soon as they do, I'll rephrase that.
Ten days' notice.
Ten days after the contract is signed. Okay, alright.
Yes, we have a regular meeting scheduled uh on December eighth, and then, of course, we'll have another one um second Monday in in January, so.
I mean, I'm there now.
Humberto?
Yep, we we really have to
Can we put Humberto on probation?
Well, no, we're not putting, not in so many words.
He's the only one. He he is the only one that's qualified right now to step up.
Right. We're just trying to, we're trying to proceed cautiously is why, what they're, what they're saying. And and I agree, but I think, you know, we can do it.
I totally
We can do it, we can do it while we're still holding everything together.
Yeah.
So how does that work if we are canceling fam's agreement? That he worked for fam, but yet we don't have
No, 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 no. Let 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 me correct you guys on that. I never worked for fam. Never.
But so do we take over that agreement is what I'm asking? Can we actually, so how is he going to operate out there?
We'll have a separate, we'll have a separate agreement with him that that was um will, you know, be a temporary agreement that can be canceled.
In ten days.
Short, short.
Or they tell me the next day, hey, uh, we don't need no more. I mean, I still got a flight school there.
Right. So between now and the date that the contract's signed, who's going to be responsible out there?
Me.
He's going to continue to do it regardless.
He's been doing it out there.
Okay. It'll just be different because it'll be under a contract, right?
That's right.
Instead of him just doing it, okay.
I I think that's our our best option. We have somebody that's been there, familiar. We need somebody right away, a ten-day notice.
And is very familiar with the operations that are about to be coming with Blue Air and all the other people.
Okay, and so we we could always uh have an opportunity to uh uh continue with our other options uh and uh hopefully by the first of the year to see what else is available. But also using Danielle and Jeremy out there at the same time so they can uh do their part to protect the city and do what they need to do, uh whether it's op- operating or ordering their fuel, so on and so forth, as well as Jeremy learning systems and getting things set, brought back to the city to get all the safety items repaired as soon as possible, up and running, as well as brought to our attention about looking for getting the grants to do some of that work. And then also then move forward, trying to get members of the uh air, people out the airport to get that advisory board, uh getting them put into the pot and say, you know, big
I agree.
To us and move forward. So I think that's a quick so, quick fix solution. With other options that I do like the idea of having the city being responsible and maybe getting the proper people to do that. And with the advisory board, they will be able to help us pick that. So I think we need to move forward in that direction now, and I'd be happy with that. And at the same time, then we also got to move forward, trying to find a new city manager. So we have a lot, a lot of things to do, but right now we got to do a quick fix on the airport. And I strongly suggest that we move that direction.
Yep, even if, even if you choose to go with the staff-run airport, Humberto's there, you you might need somebody to pick up the slack, so you might have just a contract with him to, you know, work as needed. He's there anyway.
Yeah, we don't got a problem with that.
I got a question, Humberto. Do um as part of the FAA and the certification that you had, did you have to submit for your background check in order to get those?
Yeah, the background check was uh done. You also, your background check is done when you apply for a for a uh license, private license.
Yeah.
So I guess, you know, you got to
So you 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 have, you have those licenses. So there's, I mean, we could still do ours. It may take, you know, ten days, but knowing that he's kind of vetted by the FAA, um right? So so that's, he's been vetted in a, in a, in a way, right? So I I I understand that, you know, we found and there's an opportunity, something could have happened. And that's what we will then do. Um but that would then provide, because like you said, and my concern is, is that if we're having people come here, like a a large amount of pilots, a large amount of planes, what are we going to do? And and I don't want us to, I want us to be able to provide service. And that's my goal to, until, and that gives us time to think of what we need to do.
Yeah.
Mr. Humberto, do you live in Avon Park?
No, ma'am. I live on uh two blocks away from Lakeland Airport. I travel here every day.
From Lakeland Airport?
Do you fly or drive?
No, I drive every day. I'm there every day at seven-thirty. You could, it's like clockwork. I'm there at seven-thirty, open up the doors, sit down, have my breakfast. And then when I finish breakfast, I go do my rounds.
Okay. So obviously, the uh the actual sales and everything, um our our finance staff's going to be handling that anyways. Uh the biggest thing that we need help with is actually manning the airport, having someone there at the door. Make sure no funny business goes on, make sure it's secure, make sure, as you say, with all these airplanes coming in, that we have a place to put them and everything gets fueled. So I think it's a perfect option to to have Humberto out there taking care of that. Uh as far as the need for uh Jeremy, I mean, I would say that would be up to the, you know, the city manager and what you guys see, the need out there, that's that's not going to be met by Humberto and the finance staff. And then obviously, we're still going to have to take care of the ground. So you're going to have somebody doing a lot of mowing out there and a lot of housekeeping. And then on on the actual maintenance, explain that again. It sounded like there was quite a few maintenance deficiencies, uh at at least at one time. So if there's something discovered, they're going to fix it and then bill us for it? Or how does that work?
No, they would end up going out and getting the the quote and we might, and I would explain to them, you know, try to do, get, try to get three quotes, right, for whatever it is. And then we go ahead and if there's something, for instance, maybe it's airport lighting, if I'm able to get into some If I'm able to get into something like a continuing services agreement, which has an hourly rate, and then we can just all, we all agree on that. And then we're just going forward, we choose, they, you know, it's a RF, you know, it's a RFP, and then they get, they get that. And, or whatever's within the process of the, the procurement, right? So if it's set, then they're, they're good to go. Whenever we need aircraft, we don't have to go out and get three bids every time. We can just go out there and have Andy help, help out with that, Mr. Mogul. And we can get someone in and they can just call, okay, this is the vendor, this is what's out, we need to get that done. And they just let, let us know that what's getting ready to happen, and then, uh, that, that vendor would then come in. And then we could try to find certain things that we could have the continuing services agreement on. And then, but until we get that, we'll have to try to get the three quotes and, uh, and move on from there. It also depends on how the, the life safety hazard. So if something's an issue with a plane and we have to get it fixed, then we'll get that fixed, uh, and I'd, I'd have the authority to do that. But you would all, you would end up knowing that, and I could come back, if it went over the, you know, the threshold, and come back retroactively to you guys.
Okay. So an appropriate motion to get that done, Jerry, would be?
Uh, one more question. I also would like to make sure we add Kim Lee Horn on there for the engineering and doing possible grant work, stuff like that.
I have one more question too before you, if you don't mind.
I do too.
I do too. Melody, are you gonna be able to take on the extra duty with your department? We need some new microphones.
So we did it before FAM took over.
What's that?
We did it before FAM took over all the finances for the airport, so we can handle it.
Okay. And Mr. Humberto, just out of curiosity, who has paper plane aviation?
That's my partner, Frank.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the, um, the planes is ours. We're both partners on both paper planes and Flight Academy.
Okay. Okay.
And my question is, um, this is for the council. So if Humberto is gonna be taking over, this is temporary, right? And if so, how long?
It would be ongoing until we cancel it.
Right.
Until we cancel it. And so when do we see where we're gonna be trying to move the city staff in?
So.
I, i- is that where we're going to try to put the city staff in?
So ultimately, we need to find out what, you know, what direction, and, and it, it may not be able to be known tonight because we'd rush into the decision. We have a little time, we can figure it out, everyone can mull over what was been said, and think about which direction do we move? Do we wanna have that internal? Internal with the board, which I, the committee, which I thought's an absolutely excellent idea, um, to, to help us out. Because I'm, I'm not an airport expert. I'm learning a lot in this process, but I love the, the opinions of all the, all the, of our, our community, especially pilots. So we get that, we could all come to a good decision on which route we wanna go. And then you basically direct me which way you wanna go. I mean, if, I do not wanna, you know, because of the different rules of having employees out and crossing over and erring this fund, and next thing you know, they're out there doing different jobs, like significantly, right? Just spreading. I, I'd like to have someone set, you all say, okay, we're gonna make a budget adjustment, we're gonna put people out there. Or do we wanna back off, or do we wanna say, hey, we wanna do the contract management that was coming up that? You don't have to go through the whole AIPP, uh, process that, that Lowell explained to us. So I think it's, we can think about it, don't have the rushed decision, have, let's, let's come up with the best thing, and then you let, you let me know which way you wanna go. And if any information that you need from us, we'll be, we'll be happy to provide that for you to make the best informed decision.
So the motion, an appropriate motion could be, uh, I move to, um, authorize the city manager, interim city manager, to negotiate with Humberto as to immediate needs and bring us, bring us a contract with Humberto on the eighth for our meeting at that point. You have any changes to that?
And, and then we just have to, I mean, it's just, on the eighth, how, when are those aircraft? If you don't mind, can, when are those aircraft are coming here? Because I don't wanna.
I meant, I said, you know, negotiate for immediate help and then have a contract for, they'll have to approve the contract anyway.
Okay, all right.
But the eighth, but on the eighth will be a formal contract.
All right. And, because we are, so you know, what we're doing now, we're in the process of getting everything worked out. I, I, I spoke with Danielle, um, and with finance, and we're going over this and trying to get our, our fuel, make sure everything's good with our fuel. And we have our supplier, and they, they will provide trucks, so we would be good to go there, and it would be different from everything else. So then, at that point, we'd, we'd be fine.
If, if the motion's acceptable, you could say so moved.
So move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. There are questions?
So then we, so we're then, we're just gonna not bring Danielle and Jeremy in as temporary? I, I'm missing that.
I, I am too. I, I'm so confused up here, you guys. I, it, it looked like this board was leaning again, leaning toward, I may be wrong, doing the person, doing personnel from the city. And then we find out that we can't do the fuel. I would've thought that, well, let's just let him handle the fuel, then let our staff do everything else. And the reason why I say this, Mary, the reason why I say this, the state that the airport is in right now, we, we really don't really know. We really don't. We, we guessing and, and, and FAM saying one thing and we saying another thing. And so I would've thought that we would've brought our staff out there and let our staff did what they need to do before we trying to hand it over or give it to somebody else. Let us see what's going on first. Let, let, let us find out what's going on.
Well, there's no reason why I can't do both things at the same time.
That's what I was fixing to say.
Yeah, you can do both things at the same time, because you can have the staff come out there and have him do his thing out there.
Okay, but see, I didn't think that's the way it was going. I just, or the staff gonna be put on hold.
I don't think, I don't think they're mutually exclusive alternatives.
Hold on, I'm in a corner because I can't hear everybody talk at one time.
Can we mute the, the, Mr. Butterman or? We have to.
Butterworth.
We gotta, we gotta mute it so we can coordinate these comments. We can't have cross-talk like this. Go ahead.
Sorry. It, the, the point was valid with the, you know, having the, the person that responsible that's, that's certified to deliver fuel, right? To, to pump fuel. That's, that's immediate need, right?
That's it, right? That's all they're gonna be doing?
But, but, but the thing is.
That's what I'm confused about. Is that all they're gonna be doing?
All right, just listen for a second.
What, what he had, what he proposed was everything that I read, and that would basically be, and just give you, give you a backstory. The city had a contract in 2017 where we were paying forty-five cents just for somebody to pump the fuel per gallon. He's gonna, he's, he's offered fifty cents. We, we're gonna pay him fifty cents and he's gonna do the whole operation. Five cents more, he's gonna do the whole operation minus our, our income, our, our administrative and, and mowing the grass. So it's for five cents per gallon, and he's, he's offering to do that. And, and the reason why he's doing it, because he's seeing potential in the future, and that's working out for us. And, but I'm not, I'm not, I think it's a great thing to have Jeremy there and speaking to, uh, the HR director. We can have Jeremy shadow and then maybe get to the point where he can learn this and he can get licensed. And then whatever it is that we decide going forward, then it'll give us a little bit more bargaining power, or at least whatever route we decide to go. And that would allow us, that way we don't get in a bind, get in trouble for regulatory standards, and that we're out there because you are, you can already see it now. If, if we do something wrong and we're told we shouldn't have done it, and we decide to do it anyways, then we're gonna have, we're gonna have an issue. So that will help us out, but then we're working exactly how you all, how we're, I think we're all in agreement on of getting some of our own staff up to speed and still allow, but it's a stopgap measure.
Okay. That's good on the street.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I agree.
Okay. Just a question, and I was just asking Mr. Humberto a couple of seconds ago. He pays five hundred and twenty dollars in rent? So one of the things that Avon Park Airport had always was a highly competitive fuel rate. We had people flying in from all over just to buy our fuel, which obviously compounded money to the city. Instead of having him charge fifty cents for every gallon, why not have that less and give him free rent? That way, at least we can compensate. And I know this is getting into the weeds and stuff, and I know you're gonna be working on a contract, but there would be a compensable outcome for him if he had the free rent and you still kept the fuel low so that you could still get those people to come in. Because although I know we're competitive, we used to be super competitive to where people really flew in here just for the fuel. And if we're gonna have all these people coming in the near months or so, then they wanna be remembered as well. You know, they have inexpensive fuel in Avon Park and it'll make them come back. And also, please don't forget to re, re-procure Kim Lee Horn to be your engineer of record and start working on that right away. They work at risk. Everything they do is based off of the grants. They wrote the grant for the AWAS more than likely, and therefore they know that they're gonna have cash flow when that grant comes in. So the sooner you get that grant going, the sooner you can work on the next project at the airport. And we haven't had any projects out there for a couple of years. So you're already behind the eight ball. Your funding will go away until you do another master plan.
And this was Maria Sutherland, who? Is that her address she stated earlier, I guess?
Mr. Humberto. Mr. Humberto, who, who is certified with FAM to do fuel?
I don't think he's gonna answer any questions about FAM.
Yeah.
So we didn't have a person certified to do fuel. You could say it, I mean.
I don't, I don't know.
You, you don't have to say it.
Your, your, your face can suck at all.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we got a motion. We've got a motion and we've got a second. All right, any further questions on the motion?
Humberto.
We have that.
Yes, sir.
All right, so we have another comment. Your name and address is?
Humberto.
Yeah, yeah, Neil.
Please give your name and address, sir.
Hey.
Yeah.
Neil Butterworth, sixteen oh five, sixty-four Hoffa.
Thank you.
So Humberto, you dropped the price drastically on fuel for drastic sales, did you not?
Yeah.
Okay, and how did that work out?
Not good. I didn't get too many sales.
No, he, he dropped it about almost a dollar beyond everybody else, and we couldn't get anybody coming in here because there was nothing to bring them in here.
Yeah, last, last year.
We need more. We need more to bring this airport up to date.
Um, last, well, what he, what Neil was talking about was, um, last year, um, I had to step in and buy the fuel load because there was no money to pay for it. So, um, I told him, I said, you, I paid for it, but you gotta drop it too so we could get my money back. You know, and how, well, I think we only made like thirty-seven cents per gallon. And nobody came. I mean, it was, it was, it was so low. I think I had it one time at one ninety-nine. One ninety-nine, nobody came.
Did you say a dollar eighty-nine?
Dollar ninety-nine, yeah.
For, for?
Dollar ninety-nine, for avgas. When everybody was selling it for two eighty-nine, three something, and nobody came.
They might've been afraid of it for the price.
All right, so we got a motion.
We need to find something else to bring people into this airport.
Okay. All right. End of discussion. So we have a motion in a second on the floor. Is there anything to add from the staff there? Nothing, okay.
Can, can we, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I know, I know. Just repeat the motion. I just wanna make sure I understand it correctly.
City manager to do emergency negotiations with Humberto for, in, as an emergency basis, and then at our next meeting, present a contract for us to look over.
And this will be December eighth, right?
Right.
Formal contract.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, that was my setup.
Okay.
Okay, please call and roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. So obviously, staff will reach out to Kim Lee Horn to see if they indeed are our engineer of record.
They are our engineer of record.
Okay, so we will see what grants they have ready in the pipeline, what we can accomplish before we get into a long-term agreement, uh, see if we can do anything in the interim. Is anyone opposed to that?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there anything else, uh, for this airport discussion?
One question for Jason. Jason, do FAM has any reason to be on the property at this point?
What, it's gonna, the attorney, how we go about just canceling that? I mean, they've already, from what I understand, already moved their, I, and Casey may be able to. I don't know if you have anything left. I know Humberto was saying his grill was taken, so I, I don't know, but I'm guessing everything is, is out of there. So, um, if you wanna answer that question, I mean, I, I don't want you to lose any personal effects or anything like that, sir.
Right. Casey Roberts, Florida Airport Management. Charlie Brown and JT Clark came out there over the weekend when you guys stated that you were taking over and took a bunch of stuff. So I'm letting you know, I don't know what they took, because I didn't get to do a real check of everything that was related to FAM. So there may be FAM items, um, but I don't know. So you'll have, you, you guys can go take a look at it and see the condition, and there's stuff out there. I'm not sure if it belongs to the city or belongs to FAM, so.
If, if, yeah, if you have anything that you know of and it's yours, just let us know. We'll be happy. I mean, we have the locks, the locks are, are ours. And, I mean, we have the locks and Humberto has a key, because he has the flight school inside there. So anything he needs, we're, we're willing to assist with.
We'll be in touch with Casey to talk to him anyway.
Sure.
But I, I, I don't want this to be an ugly thing.
So Mayor, are we gonna move forward also with, um, talking about how we're gonna elect the board, the airport board? Are we gonna do that tonight?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we need to put it out, um, for people to apply for it. I mean, probably our first meeting in January might be appropriate. I don't think anything, as far as discussions of whether it be RFP or finding a manager, I don't think any of that necessarily would interfere because everybody seems to be in agreement of having a board. So Jerry, as far as defining duties of the board and all that, I mean, is that something that we'd have to do right this minute, or?
No, no, I think that, um, you wanna get interested people that have qualifications and then, you know, let them develop, you know, uh, agenda and, uh, uh, their own bylaws, so to speak, and, uh, and they already have something from, from previous board, that would be helpful. So they can work with that and, and suggest something to you.
Okay. So at this point in time, we just wanna ask the public, uh, to put forward interested parties to serve on that board?
Yeah, put something on your website.
Yep. Anybody opposed to that?
We'll do that.
No.
Okay. Anything else for the airport discussion? Yes.
Yes, sir, John Hurst, uh, from, uh, Lake Placid. Um, I just might make a quick comment about the board. I think that is an excellent idea. Um, one thing from my experience, uh, as an airport director, is that, um, the board needs to be balanced. Um, so usually, we recommend no more than two airport tenants on the, a board of five, no more than two airport tenants on the board. Um, heads, uh, heads of industry, uh, in the area, um, and other interested parties, um, should also be there on the board, even possibly airport staff. Um, but just consider a balance on the board. When you have a board that's all airport tenants, it tends to be skewed.
It tends to be what?
It tends to be skewed. The discussions tend to be more about hangar rates, how much is, you know, trying to keep the, the, the rent low, things like that, which is important. But, um, you know, it's, it's important to have a, a number of different perspectives from the community on the airport board, not just airport tenants.
Is, is your board, I'm so sorry to interrupt everybody, but is your board a member of five or seven?
Um, the boards I've been familiar with were five.
Five, okay.
Well, it seemed to me like those would be the people that would be the most interested in having the airport succeed.
Absolutely, they are the most interested, and they're very important. You, but you, you can't have just one perspective on the board.
Well, I understand that, no.
So you need to have, you need to have users, general interest, um.
But it would seem to me like it'd be better to have more of, of the tenants and then have a larger board, like seven, seven.
That's possible. You just don't want, you don't want tenants being a majority of the board.
Right, understand that.
That's the only issue.
I think somebody in finance would be important to have even a bench.
Exactly, yes. Somebody in finance, um, somebody, a marketing expert, you know, people like that. And tenants are absolutely crucial on the board, and there should be no less than two.
Yeah, just people with the experience that aren't, don't happen to be at the airport.
Correct, yes.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I, um, I just wanna say, if you're, you're gonna, you ready to wrap it up?
Yep.
I just wanna say thank you to everybody who's been a part of this.